We'll call the meeting to order. And first of all, we'll do a roll call and let the record show that all members are present here. And we have a lot of guests with us. It's certainly exciting time at Rogersville City School to have everyone here. And I'm especially, my wife did join me tonight to make sure that, she did let me drive her. So I appreciate her coming to be here with me. Appreciate everyone being here. I guess the first thing we have is some recognitions.
We do. And I'm going to ask Ms. Jarnigan and her choral students to come in first. As you know, the initial dinner we had planned for you, the weather did not work great. And there was a special song of appreciation and recognition that our RCS singers had prepared. And so they're going to do that for you this evening after Ms. Jarnigan says a word or two.
We are very happy to be with you guys tonight. And thank you for the opportunity to come and sing for you and sing our appreciation to you. We really appreciate the support that you give to us in the arts and music department and also the art department. So we're glad to be here to honor you tonight. And I have one who went to get something upstairs that he left. We have some more hearts for you at the art department, Ms. Cole May, which you can put on your fridge. And now too much we appreciate you.
We are very happy to be with you guys tonight. And thank you for the opportunity to come and sing for you and sing our appreciation to you. We really appreciate the support that you give to us in the arts and music department and also the art department. So we're glad to be here to honor you tonight. And I have one who went to get something upstairs that he left. We have some more hearts for you at the art department, Ms. Cole May, which you can put on your fridge. And now too much we appreciate you.
Awesome.
You, you, you. We appreciate you. We think you are great. We appreciate you. Yeah, you really great. You make us so happy with the things you say and do. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you. You, you, you. We appreciate you. We think you are neat. We appreciate you. Yeah, you can be neat. You make us so happy with the things you say and do. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you. You, you, you. We appreciate you. We think you are cool. We appreciate you. Yeah, you really rule. You make us so happy with the things you say and do. Oh, we appreciate you. And we appreciate you. Oh, we appreciate you. You, you, you.
(applause)
That was excellent, guys. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Just hold that. Now we're going to bring in some band students. We're going to have full house in here tonight. Mr. Eller, you want to bring your band students? See, we'll put them on this side. This is an elite group right here, under the direction of our band director, Mrs. Sarah Tilly. On January the 20th, eight of our outstanding band students made the East Tennessee State Band and Orchestra Association's Junior Band Clinic, competing against other middle school students in Upper East Tennessee. Rogersville City School had the largest delegation in school history. And we are so proud of Mrs. Tilly, our accomplished band director, and these eight remarkably talented, hardworking students. When I call your name, just step forward, please. Annika Blackburn, Nathaniel Spence, Jenna Lee Williams, Yosh Trevetti, Zoe C., Makayla Craddock, Jacob Hoard, and Olivia Spence. Well done, Warriors. And congratulations to our proud parents also. Everybody will just hold that thought for one moment. What else Chairman Matt need to stand up? And you see, I have before me a folder from the State of Tennessee House of Representatives. And so there's a special proclamation I have this evening from the House of Representatives, and I read. Whereas it is fitting that the members of this legislative body should specially recognize those stalwart public servants who have dedicated themselves to improving the quality of life for their fellow citizens. And whereas one such estimable individual is Reed Dalton Matney, who has rendered 30 years of sterling service as a member of the Rogersville City Board of Education. And whereas, born on June 28, 1949, (laughter) Mr. Matney attended Rogersville City School as a student, grades one through eight, from 1955 through 1963. I don't know why they thought that was appropriate. And whereas, he was elected to the Rogersville City School Board of Education in October 1988. And since then, Reed Matney has dedicated his talents and leadership to the fullest extent to ensure that the students of Rogersville City School are able to receive the highest in education standards. And whereas, he was elected to serve the Rogersville City Board of Education as Vice Chairman on January 13, 2009, and then as Chairman on February 8, 2011, and every year since, I might add. And whereas, fully committed to the education needs of his community, Mr. Matney also joined the Tennessee School Boards Association in October 1988. And whereas, after 25 years of stalwart service, Reed Matney was inducted into the Tennessee School Board Association's Quarter Century Club in November of 2013. And whereas his many accomplishments aside, Mr. Matney is most grateful for the love and companionship he shares with his beautiful wife Regina. Together they have two daughters, Scarlett Valentine and Abby Garsavich, and five grandchildren, Meredith, Evelyn, Ruby, Sylvia, and Franklin. And whereas Reed Matney's remarkable success as a public servant and civic leader is directly attributable to his reliance on the time-honored values of hard work and common sense, and his uncommon ability to work well with people from all walks of life. And whereas, Mr. Matney is wholly committed to the noble presets of public service that have earned Tennessee recognition as the volunteer state, and it is appropriate that the members of this legislative body recognize and applaud his many contributions to the education standards of Tennessee. Now therefore, I, Beth Harwell, Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 110th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Representative Gary Hicks, do hereby proclaim that we honor and command Reed Dalton Matney for his 30 years of service for the Rogersville City School Board of Education. Salute his commitment to the teaching and instruction of Tennessee youth, and extend to him our best wishes for every continued success proclaimed in Nashville, Tennessee on this, the 6th day of February 2018, signed by Speaker of the House Beth Harwell and Ninth House District Representative Gary Hicks. Chairman Matty, we are abundantly proud of you.
Usually when I was talking to Reed Dalton Matney, I got in trouble. Good, I'm not in trouble. Thank you all very much, and certainly thank you. Your course did a great job, and the band, I had the pleasure of hearing you, and appreciated them. They were great. They did a good job. So congratulations, and thank you all very much.
You are our students. Thank you all.
Good job, Chairman.
Thanks, Reed.
Good job.
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 Mr. Matney also joined the Tennessee School Boards Association in October 1988. And whereas, after twenty-five years of stalwart service, Reed Matney was inducted into the Tennessee School Board Association's Quarter-Century Club in November of 2013. And whereas his many accomplishments aside, Mr. Matney is most grateful for the love and companionship he shares with his beautiful wife Regina. Together they have two daughters, Scarlett Valentine and Abby Garsavich, and five grandchildren, Meredith, Evelyn, Ruby, Sylvia, and Franklin. And whereas Reed Matney's remarkable success as a public servant and civic leader is directly attributable to his reliance on the time-honored values of hard work and common sense, and his uncommon ability to work well with people from all walks of life. And whereas, Mr. Matney is wholly committed to the noble precepts of public service that have earned Tennessee recognition as the Volunteer State, and it is appropriate that the members of this legislative body recognize and applaud his many contributions to the education standards of Tennessee. Now therefore, I, Beth Harwell, Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 110th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Representative Gary Hicks, do hereby proclaim that we honor and command Reed Dalton Matney for his thirty years of service for the Rogersville City School Board of Education. Salute his commitment to the teaching and instruction of Tennessee youth, and extend to him our best wishes for every continued success proclaimed in Nashville, Tennessee on this, the sixth day of February 2018, signed by Speaker of the House Beth Harwell and Ninth House District Representative Gary Hicks. Chairman Matney, we are abundantly proud of you.[563.74][563.77](applause)
Usually when I was called Reed Dalton Matney, I'd gotten in trouble.[584.54][584.57](laughter) Thank you all very much, and certainly thank you, Jim Forrest, did a great job in the band. I had the pleasure of hearing you, and I appreciate it. They were great. They did a good job. So congratulations, and thank you all very much.
You all are just great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Something weird pulled off.
I did.
Your job is to be a little more... Your job is to be a little more...
You thought she just heard the music?
Yeah. She kept that secret. Thank you all very much. I certainly appreciate it. It's just been an honor for me to serve. I enjoy it. All right, well, let's move on. I don't know what else to say.
Well, you know, we intentionally kept the agenda light this evening because you all have heard me say many times, the most enjoyable, enjoyable aspect of my job is getting to recognize my students. And to do this this evening for Chairman Matney has just been overwhelming. So wonderful, wonderful evening, and we've got some good things in store for all of you and our special guests, so we're glad that you all are here this evening. All right.
Okay. Yes, that gets us to any public input. First of all, seeing that, we'll move on to the... And see the agenda, and you see the Island's list, and I know everyone has a copy of them, looked at them, or are there any that we need to pull to... Have any explanation or any questions on them now?
I'd like to pull the school calendar.
Okay.
As far as everything else, I'm not going to mention it.
Motion to...
Approve everything else, and probably pull it out.
Oh, okay. Okay. There's motion to approve everything with the exception of the school calendar's been pulled out, and it's a second. Hall and眾 say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Yeah, the school calendar, that is...
It's an attachment.
And mainly, it was just a question concerning the President's Day, and just matching up possibly with the county as far as that goes. And I see we aren't... We'll be present for President's Day, but the Monday after Good Friday?
Easter Monday.
Easter Monday, we will be off that day, correct?
That's correct. We, and if I'm not mistaken, I think the county has added President's Day back in their schedule this year. The... Our reasoning behind that was, based on the snow days and so on, that's a day that always comes up into question, so we thought we would leave that day in the calendar. We... When we work on the calendar, first of all, there is a small committee that gets together, and that did... That this year was Ms. Vicki. Ms. Vicki's always apart. Mr. Walker, who was with us for many years, is apart. Mr. Bailey and I, Ms. Winstead and Mr. Kenner both had commitments this year. But we always develop a basic calendar, and then we send it out to get input from every staff member, from our certified and unclassified staff members. So we did not have any issues. We do compare numerous calendars. We also noted that in next year's calendar, Hawkins County is actually, for example, closed. I think they're off Veterans Day and Election Day, which we are not. And we look at that as... Our students are always involved in some type of veterans' recognition, and we love being able to do that as a school family. And as far as our staff goes, you know, we've got a significantly high number of personal leave, that's if they would go do that. What we do, Dr. Trent, is we recognize that we are a separate and distinct system, but there are commonalities. And I always say, you know, I recognize the fact that we've got families that have children and parents in two different systems potentially, so we always try to keep, always try to keep, fall break and spring break. We may vary a day or two at Christmas break. We may vary with... We have a later start typically, so we also have a later closure. We're hoping that we don't have any more inclement weather days. We may. We've got five days left if that happens for us. But we do look at Hawkins County's calendar more closely than any other. We don't try to make it a mirror, but we do try to, you know, to really allow them to have some important dates.
And on this side, I realize that we're a separate, but at the same time, we want to work together as much as we can.
Sure.
And with the week before and the week after, that's two weeks of conflict. I just don't want to bear it too much because we do have...
This is pretty consistent with our start date this year and the last several years. What seems to be happening is the county seems to be starting earlier.
And I believe their biggest case is they're trying to get the semester...
Absolutely, because they're dealing with a high school where we are not, and dealing with end-of-course testing. And having been in a district where I was second-year supervisor on, I am certainly so. We do take all of the feedback that we can get, but I will tell you, our staff is vehemently opposed to starting in July. So...
I understand, and you've never heard me complain.
No, 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 no. So, but anyway, we do take, and Ms. Vicki can affirm, Mr. Bailey is actually with... He's got baseball practice this evening. He's our baseball coach, incidentally. And he can affirm that we do look at all the pieces of the puzzle. We really do try to make it... We have, Ms. Vicki can tell you, it's kind of calm at times. We start it with this ideal calendar. And then we start, I mean, because we really do take every suggestion we've heard. Some of them is just a conversation in the hallway. We take every suggestion. We're like, no, we can't do that. Or yes, we can. So it's quite an intensive, exhausted process, but we do feel that we have a good calendar and that we have included everyone in the development. And as such, I do commend its approval.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the school calendar presented? Motion, is there a second? Not a second. Hall and眾 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries. All right. Gets us down to...
The Director's Update.
Yeah.
Intentionally...
Update, all right.
We wanted this to be an evening of celebration and recognition and appreciation of all of you, so intentionally. Promise you what the March gentle will look like. This was all about you. Okay. In the Director's Update, I wanted you to know that I attended the TOS Legislative Learning Conference in Nashville this week. And this was the first time in my seven years as the Superintendent that I've had an opportunity. All the school superintendents were invited to the Capitol to be a part of session, and we were all recognized by Representative Forgady, who describes himself as a recovering superintendent. And additionally, Representative Hicks also acknowledged Director Starnes from Hawkins and Director Seale from Hancock and I. And so we very much appreciated that. So that was enjoyable, and it was great to represent Rogersville that way in the General Assembly. On March the 23rd, which is the Friday before spring break, Rogersville City School is going to have a very special visitor, Minister of Education Candace McQueen is going to be joining us here at City School as part of her classroom chronicles tour, and she wants to visit classrooms. So she's gonna be with us for about forty-five minutes that day, and we, Ms. Winstead and I, are already working on that schedule. We're just going to dazzle her with all things wonderful. Well, there's no way we could dazzle her with all things wonderful about Rogersville City School. But we are certainly going to give her a taste in the brief time that she's here, so that is very exciting. Despite a flu season, we have been somewhat impacted. Ms. Vicki has done an excellent job of keeping us apprised daily on what our attendance looks like. We certainly are holding our own. I realize with very warm stint of weather coming up, that has potential to make those germs even worse than they are. But, you know, we're doing a great job with cleanliness and all those kinds of things, and just impressing upon kids and each other to keep your hands washed and so on. But it's something that we are monitoring daily. If there were a need to close school, as I said, we do still have some days remaining in the calendar, so we will certainly... Ms. Vicki and I keep a watchful eye on that, so. Our students and staff are working incredibly hard, and I wanted to share something with you that I really enjoyed. You will take one and pass it. This was actually a collaborative by our media specialist, Mrs. Fields, and our sixth-grade reading language arts teacher, Mrs. Davenport. And it was working on a curriculum standard that had to do with references, of course, newspapers being one, and the students decided that they wanted to create their own. So this is our first Warrior News developed by our sixth-grade students, and they just did an excellent job on it. I was so impressed. Do you have... Everybody get one? Everybody get one? So I thought you would enjoy that, and Ms. Davenport and Ms. Fields certainly wanted me to share that with you. And the students very proudly brought me a package to give to you, so please enjoy that. As you are not surprised to know, we are heavily in budget development at Rogersville City School. Our supervisors, administrators have been working with those under their charge to really develop. There again, we look at the ideal, and then we start prioritizing and then making the decisions that will best our students. Ms. Elwes, we are not going to ask the town for any money.
Right.
We do our best to be those good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar, and I think we're gonna be able to do that again. But, you know, there are some needs that we're going to be addressing, and that's incumbent on us to do that, so we will share those certainly with the budget. I would love them to present the budget in April. I don't know that we'll be able to do that because we'd like to have a clear picture of what our numbers are gonna look like from the state. We typically don't have that in people, despite the fact, Ms. Karen, and I would love to be able to present it then, so. But the good news on here, Ms. Elwes, we're not wasting money, so we appreciate that. And we appreciate how we're funded anyway, so thank you so much. Ms. Winstead has been working on some specialized training for our K-3 reading and language arts teachers. It's gonna start immediately after the close of schools. School ends on May 31st, we hope, if the weather continues to cooperate. And so we're excited about that. Our teachers on grade levels will be working together, generating some text sets and pacing guides, so we're very excited about the work that's gonna be happening there. And Ms. Martin, in her work with math, she was spending a meeting in Kingsport today, and she came in all giddy in a Twitter about all the things she wanted to do. She wants the teachers the entire month involved in this for professional development in math. So I told her to stop going to these meetings and showing off because someone would want to hire her. So, anyway, so we're very excited about the work that Ms. Martin's doing. Very pleased with that. I want to share with you a letter. I shared with you a letter a few months back that I had received from Councilor Bill Phillips regarding an opinion in the liquor-by-the-drink issue. Well, there's now been another opinion that has come forward. And so Councilor Phillips is certainly monitoring that for us on behalf of the town of Rogersville. But this is the communication I received from him this week. "We now have competing opinions from two different panels of the Tennessee Court of Appeals. The Middle District of the Tennessee Court of Appeals recently issued an opinion in the case of Coffee County Board of Education versus City of Oklahoma, a copy of which is enclosed herein. The Coffee County case further complicates the issue of distribution of liquor-by-the-drink tax as it interprets TCA 574306A2A as requiring a distribution among all school systems within the county. Due to the fact that the City of Kingsport municipal boundaries encroach within Hawkins County, the opinion could mandate we also share with the City of Kingsport Schools. I have no doubt the issue will eventually work its way to the Supreme Court of the State of Tennessee, which will make the ultimate decision regarding distribution of liquor-by-the-drink taxes. I will keep you advised regarding further developments, so we will see." Again, it's not a huge amount of money, but the potential exists now that we can not only share with Hawkins County, but with the City of Kingsport. So we know that Councilor Phillips will keep us advised in that manner. And certainly, as always, at the request of our athletic director, Dennis Renner, I share the Athletic Update with you. It's been a busy few months for the Warriors, and continues to be at this time. The RCS Warriors and Lady Warriors have just completed a very successful basketball season. Both teams finished with winning records. The Lady Warriors went fourteen and eight for the season, while the Warriors had a fifteen-eight record. Both teams finished fourth in the Big Three Conference and qualified for the TMSAA Area One Tournament. The girls were knocked out of the tournament in the first round by DeBuss, thirty-three to thirty-one. The boys made it to the consolation game before their season ended with a loss to University Middle. The JV teams also had successful seasons. The JV girls ended the year with a winning record of thirteen and four, which included a second-place finish in the Bulls Gap Christmas Tournament. The boys JV finished fourth in the Bulls Gap Christmas Tournament as well. So things are looking bright for Warrior basketball next year. Our baseball, softball, and track teams are preparing for their upcoming seasons. Opening day for baseball and softball is March the first, with both teams visiting Westview of Washington County. The first home game for our baseball, softball teams will be March the fifth, when Mary Hughes pays a visit to City Park. Our first track meet will be on March 22nd, with both girls and boys teams competing at the Volunteer High School Track Meet Invitational. And as always, if you check our website, we do always have the calendar of our athletic events on there as well. So that concludes the Director's Update.
All right. A lot of things going on. All right. Yes, that gets us to the announcements, and one there's the next board meeting being Tuesday, March 13th. I'll get that.
Yeah, I was gonna see if we could maybe go it on Monday or... That's K-1's first track, purity track.
They'll be upset with surgery that day, too, so it would be better for me to do it on Monday, too.
Let's see. The 11th. The... March 12th. Could be... Earl, do you have any... Stop. Okay, well...
And it doesn't encroach on spring break this year. Spring break's later.
There you go.
That's important.
Right, that's very important. All right, well, there's no objection. We'll just reschedule the meeting for March the 12th at five o'clock. If I had it, we'll get the notices, appropriate things out.
Ms. Vicki does a masterful job at all of that.
All right, that concludes our meeting. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn to the cafeteria.
Adjourn to the cafeteria.
I'll say.
We finally got a second. We have a third report. We're adjourned now. All right.
Ready, set, go.
Thank you, gosh, I did. Our pride.
That's good. There are a lot of people kept that in mind.